It's not on.
It went on.
It's not there, though.
There's not showing us the camera. Oh, sorry, I want to take myself off.
You're right. Correct my posture. Why? That's not like our camera or anything. All right, I'll call to order the town of Mount Desert Planning Board meeting for September fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Welcome aboard. So. We are still in hybrid territory here. I think, you know, just there's a lot of pluses to staying on Zoom. But we've got. Half of us are here and half of us are out in the ether of the internet, I guess, and. Now make introductions myself, William Hanley, I'm chairman. We've got Tracy Loftus Keller here. We've got online, we've got Dave Ashmore. Hi, Dave, you're on mute and and Christie Anastasia, who just turned her camera. And back on. And I would certainly hope Christie that for the. Our esteemed applicants tonight that we don't have to do the Zoom spiel, but um. If you have a burning need to give the Zoom spiel about unmuting yourself. Feel free and you're you are on mute, Christie. You are on mute. Press the space bar.
Do you want me to give this spiel or not give this spiel?
Yeah, of course, give it.
I have like everybody here a Zoom butt. Okay, so welcome to Zoom Plan and Planning Board. If you have something to share with the planning board, share it verbally. We don't use the chat for side conversations, but you can use the chat to sign in. And if you are not speaking, if you could mute, that would be great because sometimes there's background noise. And if we notice that sounds coming from your place, we might ask you to mute. I'm sure everyone's heard this a bazillion times. So hopefully we have it down.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, rolling on approval of minutes. Do we have minutes to approve from the last one was the last hearing?
August fourteenth.
August fourteenth.
I could make a motion to approve the minutes from August fourteenth.
Anastasia, second.
Right, all those in favor, Tracy?
Tracy Keller.
Christie?
Anastasia, I.
Dave? Hey, Bashmore, I.
Myself, William Manley, I. All right. Let's keep going. So item three on the agenda tonight, we have some conditional use approval applications, and this is. The first one is continued from May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. We have additional use approval application. Oh, oh, seven, twenty twenty-two. Name town amount dessert agent is Tony Smith from Public Works Department. Location is Beach Hill Crossroads Tax Map ten and it's near lots. Oh, oh, two, oh, oh, nine dash one oh three, oh, oh, nine dash one oh four. It's the zone in Shoreland Residential Two and purposes section three point four excavation filling more than a hundred fifty cubic yards. And culvert replacements within the Beach Hill Crossroad and slope stabilization along the Beach Hill Crossroad. And. Were abutters and. Notified and this one advertised.
No, because it was a continuation from the May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two meeting. Don't have to do that when you do a date, so.
Thank you. And so. Tony, perhaps you could, for the record. Refresh us while you're before us.
Sure, there are presently two metal culverts. Where we'd like to put this new box cover. And it's in it's in conformance with D E P's Stream Smart Program. The days of pulling out a pipe and putting in a new pipe in its place are long gone. You have to create a passageway one. What we're doing is to hopefully prevent or greatly reduce the periodic flooding of Beach Hill Crossroad in that area. Result of that flooding, the road is washed out a number of times or presently steel plates across. Those two culverts now maintain traffic. One of those culverts has a we slip lined one new pipe inside an old deteriorated pipe, just in case they both collapsed. We'd pass some water down through there. The stream smart program. The 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 design ended up with being a box culvert. Eight by fourteen feet, the width of the road and within that box culvert, you have to. Simulate the the natural stream bed so that the critters aquatic and actually some. A non aquatic can make their way. Upstream or downstream is the case, maybe one culvert's about a foot off the ground on the discharge side, making it difficult for fish to migrate. Crustaceans, whatnot, there'll be rocks, it'll be a rock line bottom with big rocks. Within the culvert for for animals to get behind to take a rest and. Armor up to side for the same same reasons. But it's it's. Flooded quite a number of times, it's it's. Maintenance intensive to to repair those and the culverts are in very, very bad shape.
Got it. Thank you. I guess I'll open it up for public comment. Alrighty, no public comment. I'll close up. Did you have your hand up, Christie?
Sort of, I was gonna comment as a public, not as board member. But I live in that area and I go past that a lot and there's been a couple of times where. And I'm sure, Tony, you've seen this, where the water like completely covers the road. And it's deep. I ran through it once, thinking it wasn't as deep as it was, but it was very.
Yes, it is.
It was very deep. And then I've also seen. Like a critters mammals crossing there a lot like baby, whatever, you know. Beaver, little furry things, other things like that. Anyway, it's it's and it's a big bump now. You really have to drive it very carefully. It's, you know. So anyway, it needs work. That's that's the citizen comment.
Thank you.
Any other citizen comments? None heard. I'll close public comments and get the show on the road here. Well. First thing, I made a motion to find the application complete.
Tracy Keller, I'll make a motion to find the application complete.
Anastasia, second.
Right, all those in favor, Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Christie?
Anastasia, I.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, I.
Myself, William Hanley, I. Any conflict of interest on board with this one? None heard? Any perhaps a motion to use the short form?
Anastasia, I make a motion that we use the short form.
Dave Ashmore, second.
Dave, it looks like you got a brand new camera.
Yeah, I I left my laptop. Down at Mount Desert and I'm in Brewer tonight. So you're on my phone.
Oh, wow, it looks way better. You're looking sharp.
All right, Tracy.
Oh, Tracy, Tracy Keller, I, what am I doing?
We're just continuing the motion on the short form.
Short form.
Yeah. Very unchairman like of me. William Hanley, I, short form it is.
I have Christie, motion, babe, second. Tracy and you are the only two you've got.
Oh, you guys have to say, Christie and.
All right, Dave?
Dave Ashmore, I.
Christie?
Anastasia, I.
Short form it is. And. Then let's do our thing where we any motion to approve the application.
Tracy Keller, I'll make a motion to approve.
Anastasia, second.
We press the pause button and let's go through the review of the application. So I've got. We got the short form checklist in front of me. I've got the application in front of me. And let's go through it. So. We were going through six A, B, and C and five nine. And six A for general performance standards compatibility. The physical size, they talk about the structure, it's gonna be eight feet high, seventeen feet wide, visual impact is negligible, it's a big. Concrete box culvert set down in the stream. The proximity others structures, no impact and density of development in a C application. Fix A two erosion and sedimentation control. It's gonna be in accordance with the DOT's latest edition of standard specifications for highways and bridges. And which refer to the D P's best management practices. So see application. Yeah, and just one clarification on the culvert size, Tony, is it eight by fourteen or eight by seventeen?
Oh, you're on mute.
Tony?
Make sure I wasn't gonna do that tonight. The the four it's fourteen inside.
Okay. It's fourteen on inside and is seventeen outside?
Outside, outside, yes.
Okay, yeah. Thank you. Highway safety. Says it's not gonna end, it's probably gonna better highways and safety. Yes, the application. Impact on town services and a. Land suitability. Says agreed, see attached. See application. Six A six lighting, there's no lighting. And a stormwater. You know, it's gonna, yeah, it's gonna have the same stormwater drainage as pre-project. So see application. Vegetation, six A eight. Says in a. Does humans papers orders and gases and a. So the findings are fact are as presented by the applicant and see the attached application. And that the inclusion laws that propose uses in compliance with the standards of section six A for which the standard has been met.
Tracy Keller, so moved.
Anastasia, second.
Right, all those in favor, Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Christie?
Anastasia, I.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, I.
So William Manley, I, right, section six B. Specific performance standards for activities and land uses, so. Six B one agricultures and a six B two air landing sites and a six B seven. Excavation other than gravel pits or filling. See application. Six B eight fences and walls and a six B sixteen and a for sign regulations, six B eighteen. Wireless communication facilities and a. Six B nineteen animal husbandry true to and a mobile food vendors. And a grooming house and a and. Hotels and motels and a. So the findings of factor that the proposed use include none of specific activities or land uses described in section six B except for six B seven. And the conclusion law is sex B is sex section six B is not applicable except for six B seven for which the standard has been met.
Tracy Kelly, so moved.
You're on the roll, Tracy. That's why I was letting you do that. Anastasia, second.
Right, all those in favor, Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Christie?
Anastasia, I.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, I.
So William Manley, I, all right, well, since we're in the Shoreland Zoo Shoreland. Two zone. Sure, we're gonna go through section six C Shoreland zoning standards for review by the planning board. Six C one. Agriculture and a sixty-two archaeological sites. They've got a map submitted, so see attached. Six C five essential services. And a. Parking areas and a. Sixty-seven marine and freshwater structure standards. And a building appear. Sixty-nine roads and driveways. Just talk about the, yeah, it says and a. Water quality. Says correct.
Just put the application.
Applicable standard met.
Yes, that's the application. So the findings of factor that the proposed use will include none of this specific activities or land uses described in section sixty except for sixty-two. And sixty eleven in this conclusion laws that section sixty is not applicable except for sixty-six C two. And sixty eleven for which the standard has been met.
Tracy Keller, so moved.
Anastasia, second.
All those in favor, Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Christie?
Anastasia, I.
Dave?
Hey, Bashmore, I.
Myself, William Manley, I, so. Since we're in the Shoreland Zone, we get to look at section five nine and. Go through it. Five nine one will maintain safe and helpful conditions. See application. Five nine two will not result in water pollution, erosion, or sedimentation to surface waters. See application. Five nine three will adequately provide a disposal of wastewater and a. Five nine four will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life. Bird or other wildlife habitat. See application. Five nine five. Will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual points of access to inland and coastal waterways. See application. Five nine six will protect archaeological and historic resources designated in the comp plan. See application five nine seven will not adversely affect. Existing commercial fishing or maritime activities in a shoreline commercial. That's and a you're not in Shoreland Commercial. Five nine eight will will avoid problems with floodplain. See, see application, I would. Think you're gonna be helping. Five nine nine is in conformance with provisions of section six A, B, and C. For which the standard is met, finding this effect are see above in the conclusion laws that all requirements for section. Five nine have been met.
Tracy Keller, so moved.
Anastasia, second.
All those in favor, Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Christie?
Anastasia, I.
Dave?
Hey, Bashmore, I.
Myself, William Manley, I. So permit conditions. Annie? Kim shaking her head no.
Can't remember when we when we talked about this last time. I don't think there were any permitting conditions, right? I mean, I know we didn't do anything, but we had a short discussion about it.
Tony, where where are you guys in the D P permitting process?
We have the we have the permit. We're good.
Maybe that was the condition that the permits were in place or something like that.
And if. Yeah, if you recall, the your permit expired after one year and they couldn't get the culvert last last year, so we had to wait.
Do you have the culvert now?
That's R F Jordan is doing the work. Once I'll be contacting V H B, the engineering firm, they'll be in touch with Jordan. I'm hoping they do. Yeah, but they can't. They can't work until next July now, anyway. Due to the fish run. And working in the water, mid-July, October. Is a construction season.
Right. Understanding is that there's no permit conditions, and so I'll go back and press play to the approval of the application. All those in favor of approving the application, Tracy?
And Tracy Keller, I.
Christie?
Anastasia, I.
Dave?
Hey, Bashmore, I.
Myself, William Manley, I. Congrats, Tony.
Thank you, folks. I appreciate appreciate it for sure.
Hey, everybody say bye to Tony. Tony's retiring on the thirty-first of October.
What? No way.
No way.
Yeah.
Hear that?
Yeah. That's.
You turn into a pumpkin on October thirty-first.
Yeah.
Will you come in and yell at us about something one last time?
No, I'll be. I don't think I've ever yelled at you. Maybe maybe you in your office or somebody else or somebody else in your office. No, I. Sixty-six and a half and I figured I don't want to turn seventy-six and a half and go, geez, I wish I'd retired ten years ago.
Yeah, don't do that.
No, no.
Well, congratulations, Tony.
Thank you.
Been a pleasure working with you all these years.
Same here. This is this has been great and. If they put the same picture in the newspaper that they have online today in the Islander, that picture is like eighteen years old.
Yes.
Yeah, I thanked it bro very much for peeling the ears off of me.
Good news, Tony. Enjoy retirement and I hope to see your face while you are retired.
You will, I'm sure. Thanks, folks. I really appreciate it. Thank you, Kim. We'll see ya.
Tracy, you got it.
Okay.
It is no Tony.
There you go.
Does um, what's happening right now? Is there a timeline when that has to be signed?
Yeah, I mean, as soon as you can come in and sign it so that we can get the final stuff out to the applicants. You know.
Today's. So I'm just, I'm gonna be out of town next week if I stop by like on. Would it be done as early as Friday or Thursday or?
We've always we always have the sign in sheet in the town office after the meeting, so you can come in.
Okay. So tomorrow would be fine.
Yep.
Okay, I will do that, thank you.
All right, item B under conditional use approval applications. We have conditional use approval application. Ten twenty twenty-two name town amount desert. It's the Northeast Harbor Marina. The agent is Greg Johnson from G F Johnson. Location forty Harbor Drive, Northeast Harbor Tax Map twenty-four. It's near lot one forty-eight, the zone is Shoreland Commercial and it's the purposes section three point four and sixty-seven. Yeah, marine structure replaced to existing sixteen foot. Candle levered concrete abutments with. Ten foot stone veneer abutments. And then also replace existing thirty-seven foot aluminum ramps with sixty foot aluminum ramps. We had a site inspection at four o'clock and this one was advertised.
It was, it was advertised in the Islander. And the Ellsworth American on September first and a butter's notice was sent out September second.
Right, I guess I'll first ask.
We didn't hear from anybody.
First, all right, and we didn't hear from anybody and. I guess Tracy was at the site visit today at four o'clock, so I guess.
I met with Greg Johnson and we looked at both of the abutments. First, we went to the one that's in the southeastern area and observed the. Fact that they can't levered and. Have had a lot of weathering, the existing ones and. But Greg explained to me that it would the replacement. Abutment would be. Pretty much the whole thing would be over land and that the the structure would be covered. With stone and all of the hardware would be stainless steel, so it would be a lot more durable and. The. Ramps would then be lengthened to accommodate the space. That was. That the candle lever component handled before and then we walked to the northern northwestern one and looked at that with the same. Sort of the same solution. So it seems a pretty straightforward method of. Replacement and improvement in design. That that's all I deserve.
All right, well, turn it over to Greg to. Add to it.
Yep, great description on our site visit. There's in the back of your binder, there is a photo section if you. Want. From where I headed the plan, but the buttons were. One of them was built in the forties and at some time later, the second one was built at different time. There's a point where the soft was worked through the concrete, expanded the rebar. Of course, the panel there's more stress observing and those areas are spalling cracking. And. So replacing one role, we spent a lot of time in the John Pauline in the heart of the looking at different options. We had gone through bid with a different scenario. Too costly and we ran to go to read marine grade concrete. Abutment such veneer to stone, we had tried to do a traditional granite stone, but the base room was holding out of reach. Listen to the buttons, but also then it's been. Consideration of how people come and go and they're really stupid low, so to make them more accessible. You go less of a can lever, get along the ramp and it makes the smoke less coming going from both the arena side and the. How the type of. We have the on the core permit, the D P permits, it's gone up to bid our program award bid. Most last week, the design will put up did the ramps and. Those are awarded currently in construction. Well, there's one will be replaced at a time and both dogs will be accessible because they will have a very ramp down each one of the four nets and found off and. From that and found off and the other one work is slated to start in October. We wrapped up probably by the end of November and then final asphalt in this way.
Any public comment on this one? I'll open it up for public comment. As I make a citizen comment, I think it's gonna look a heck of a lot better. I mean, just those cantilevers are in sad, sad shape and.
Oh, they, I would say to the, I would admit they put in a lot of work in defining what has to be replaced in there. And this is only a small part, I think, to their overall look at even the main. Really due to their work and we're just a conduit for what they really want.
Great. Any other comments? Alright, none heard. I'll close public comments. And then first ask if there's a motion to find the application complete.
Anastasia, I make a motion to find this application complete.
Tracy Keller, second.
Alright, all those in favor, Christie.
Anastasia, I.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Myself, William Hamley, I. Any motion used the short form? On this one.
Anastasia, I make a motion. We use the short form.
She got you, Tracy. Alright, all those in favor, Christie.
Anastasia, I.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Self, William Hamley, I. Any conflict of interest on the board? None heard and I'll ask anyone who care to make a motion to approve the application.
Tracy Keller, I'll make a motion to approve.
Anastasia second.
Alright, we'll press the pause button and let's dig through it. Right, I have the short form checklist in front of me. And I've got the application. And we'll go through it. So six A one compatibility. Replacing. The abutment with another abutment that's a heck of a lot better looking, so the application. Six A two, erosion, sedimentation control. Yeah, they've got erosion control plans submitted. So see application, six A three highway safety. Ramps are built offsite. And they're gonna use the existing town parking lots and see application for staging. Impact on town services, those projects is the replacement existing abutments won't cause any new. Burden to town services, see application. Land suitability. You know, it's replacing with like kind, see application. Six A seven stormwater.
Lighting, did we do lighting?
Did I miss that?
No, new lighting, it says. Six A six.
Sorry. Lighting at door, there's no lighting, is there, Greg? Yeah, so and a. And now stormwater, six eight seven, it's that. Generator they just cooked, kicked on or whatever that thing is through me. Yeah, it's not gonna, it's not a, the applicant says it's not affecting existing flows from the sides of the. And vegetation and a impacting any. Six eighty nine dust fumes, vapors, odors and gases. And they say, and a, the findings of fact are that the. That the findings of factor is presented by the applicant in the attached application. And that the conclusion laws, the pros uses in compliance with section six A. For which the standard has been met.
Tracy Keller, so.
Anastasia second.
Right, all those in favor, Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Christie.
Anastasia, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Myself, William Hamley, I. Alright, six B, specific performance standards for activities, land uses. Agriculture and a airline landing sites and a six B seven excavation. And the applicant says only excavation as part of the project will be. Required for construction erosion control means to be installed, so see application. Six B eight fences and walls. Non-proposed and a sign regulations, there's non-proposed and a. Six B eighteen wireless communication facility, non-proposed. Six B nineteen animal husbandry tree two. And a. Six B nine, six B twenty, mobile food vendors and a. Six B twenty one rooming house and a six B twenty two hotels and motels and a. Findings of fact are that the proposed use will include none of the specific activities or land uses described in section six B. Except for six B seven and the conclusion laws that section six B is not applicable except for six B seven. Which the standard has been met.
Tracy Keller, so.
Anastasia second.
Right, all those in favor, Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Christie.
Anastasia, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Myself, William Hamley, I. So section six C shoreline zoning standards for review by the planning board. Flipping to section six here in the application. Page nineteen. Alright, sixty one. Agriculture and a sixty two archaeological sites. It's on previously developed lands, see, and they have a map attached, so see application. Six three, sixty three essential services. And a sixty. Wait, yeah, this is where it goes and it jumps. Sixty five is essential services and that's and a, so it goes from two to five. And then sixty six parking areas. And a. Sixty seven marine and freshwater structure standards. And so they say, please see attached cover letter for full description for the stand, how the standards are met. Standards thirteen to sixteen to commercial or public facilities. Anything you wanna?
And so to, all I would say is the dimensional table that's in the delay doesn't apply, that's seventeen or sixteen. And if you want specific responses to each one of the ones in the. Sixty seven, the front three pages of the book.
Yeah, I'm gonna say see application. And then sixty nine roads and driveways and a, and sixty eleven water quality. The proposed project will not impact the water qualities, the. The prior means and methods about erosion control, so see application. Findings of fact are that the proposed use will include none of the specific activities or land uses described in section sixty. Except for sixty two, sixty seven and sixty eleven. And that's the conclusion laws that section sixty is not applicable except for. Sixty two, sixty seven and sixty eleven, for which the standard has been met.
Tracy Keller, so.
Anastasia second.
Alright, all those in favor, Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Christie.
Anastasia, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Myself, William Hamley, I. Alright, well, since we're in the shoreline commercial zone. We're doing five nine. So. Get to that in here, page twenty five. Will maintain safe and helpful conditions, see application. Will not result in water pollution, erosion, or sedimentation of surface waters, see application. Will adequately provide for disposal of wastewater and a. Will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, or other wildlife habitat. See application will conserve short cover and visual as well as actual points of access to inland and coastal waters. See application. Will protect archaeological and historic resources as designated in the comp plan. See application, five nine seven will not adversely affect existing commercial fishing or maritime activities. And showing commercial district, I would think you're enhancing it. See application, five nine eight, will avoid problems associated with floodplain. See application and is in conformance for the provisions, section six A, B, and C. It's a standard match. Finding some factors, see above and inclusion laws that all requirements, section five nine have been.
Tracy Keller, so.
Dave Ashmore, second.
Alright, all those in favor, Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Christie.
Anastasia, I.
Myself, William Hamley, I. Alright, are there permit conditions on this one?
They have those, they have the condition.
Those are not conditions. Final comments on the application.
So no permit conditions.
No final comments on the application, so we'll circle back to approval and press play. All those in. In favor of approving the application. Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Christie.
Anastasia, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Myself, William Hamley, I. Congratulations.
Is they CEO or building? Building. And. And I wanna thank staff for getting the right application in the binders. We have to shuffle them all back into the binder. I don't know how they got back in the binder.
Decided.
Your question later, and you wanna just discuss later?
What? No, I wanna ask you.
Okay.
Off the record.
Process.
Yeah.
Alright.
You guys all said.
We're on item four now, other. Is there any other other? Nothing. We're good. Alright, our favorite item five adjournment.
I make a motion, we adjourn the town of Mount Desert Planning Board Meeting of September fourteenth, twenty twenty two.
Dave Ashmore, second.
Right, all those in favor, Christie.
Anastasia, I.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, I.
Myself, William Hamley, I. Alright.
Where's your gavel? Aren't you banging?
Yes, I do.
That's the best part. Don't break it.
Use my cellphone.